Good evening. The September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five special meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section three-three-one-three point one-five of the Ohio Revised Code. Please place your mobile phones on silent mode for this meeting. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Iaplo.
Here.
Ms. Jesslin.
Present.
Ms. Marchada.
Present.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here. Thank you, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an executive session on the agenda this evening with one of the topics being discussion on economic development. For this particular discussion, two votes from the board are required to go into executive session. Pursuant to Revised Code one-two-one-point-two-two-G eight, I move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance or negotiations between the school district and other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance as provided in Revised Code five-seven-zero-nine-point-seven-three to Revised Code five-seven-zero-nine-point-seven-five, and that the information is directly related to a request for economic development assistance under Ohio law, or that involves public infrastructure improvements, or the extension of utility services that are directly related to an economic development project.
Second.
Third discussion. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslin.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchada.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
Pursuant to Revised Code one-two-one-point-two-two-G eight, I move that the executive session is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant, or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project. A unanimous vote is required.
Second.
Third discussion. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslin.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchada.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
When we reconvene to open session, we will continue with the public items on the agenda.
Do you want to state the other three reasons?
Yeah. I have no problem doing that, but I don't have them on my list. Thank you. Our other reasons for executive session would be to discuss the employment and/or complaints of a public official, to discuss matters required to be kept confidential under federal or state law, and to discuss a matter related to preparing and/or conducting negotiations with a labor organization.
So moved.
Second.
Is that right?
Yep. Yes.
Call me.
Please.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslin.
Yes.
Ms. Marchada.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero. We are now in executive session as of six-oh-four P.M. Out of executive session at eight-twelve P.M.
At this time, we have the approval of the revised minutes. Do I have a motion? Second. Is there any discussion?
Ooh, Ms. Iaplo.
I said. Please call the roll.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslin.
Yes.
Ms. Marchada.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
Next, we have the Board of Education report and recommendations, and the first item under Board Business is the second reading and approval of Board of Education new policies. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jesslin.
Yes.
Ms. Marchada.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
Next, we have a discussion on transportation. Would anyone like to start?
I will just kind of ask a few questions about transportation, in reference to clubs, like Top Twenty-Five and things like that. I know I had emailed you, but can you just kind of reiterate what you wrote back to me and kind of what we're looking into?
Yeah, so I believe our Top Twenty-Five advisor reached out to Mr. Fulmer and our new principal that inquire about some additional busing to events this year. It kind of took Mr. Fulmer by surprise because that wasn't one of the things that was in the budget, and of all the principals, he doesn't have the largest principals fund in the district. So I think that's where the questions may have originated. So what we're doing right now, I reached back out to Mr. Crowe, obviously he's over in Rocky River now, and I said, hey, quick question for you. What have we done in the past? And he says, well, they, if they had an event that they needed to go to, they would reach out to me and we would try and figure out a way to get it done. When we did some digging, I think we found one last year.
Yeah.
That they had actually taken district transportation to an event. So with that information now, I'm going to work with Mr. Fulmer to figure out, number one, you know, how many events do we need to budget for here? And number two, how are we going to pay for that? Whether that's out of principal fund accounts there, or if there's, you know, every year, you know, a different club advisor or a principal may come to me and ask if there are any funds that I have in any of my accounts that I might be able to cover something for them. With this being, you know, kind of a surprise request that came to him, that's something that we can take a look at there as well. So we'll follow up with Mr. Fulmer on that one. But again, that kind of leads into, we were just talking about this as well, okay, we've got Model UN and mock trial and those sorts of things, and how do we get our kids to those events? And a lot of times, it's fundraising through that club or activity account, and they pay for the transportation that way. So that may be something that we have to look into here for all of our clubs and activities as well.
Because I know, I had emailed you too, they were kind of in a catch-22 because they can't drive themselves, which I believe they were doing, but our policy actually, I believe, prohibits that.
Correct.
So we would have to look into possible policy changes if we, if they can't afford it and we can't bus them. I wouldn't want them to miss out. I mean, if it's like, when I was in Top Twenty-Five, I wanted them to go, which we could, you know, we were able to use the bus to get us to Twinsburg or to get us to local places, but then we paid for the busing if it was like harder, you know, if it was much harder than we paid for like a, you know, coach bus.
Yeah.
So that might be something that if we can't, like I said, if those two things are not available, then maybe we do allow the students.
Yeah, that was, so when I asked you about this at our last board meeting, a parent had approached me too, and she, you know, she's a member of Top Twenty-Five, and it was more of the question of like, you know, this new policy, I think it was Mrs. Leal who let her know, like this new policy really doesn't allow you to drive your own kids, and so that was kind of the crux of the issue.
It'd be interesting to see if we, if we had something different in Pebble and Waggon and Neola if that shift has taken place, but the practice has not.
Right, so this is, policy eighty-six forty is the new one. It says it was last revised in May of last year, and so that's why I sent this to the two of you after the last board meeting to look into, because, I mean, I know for our extracurriculars, we do drive our kids, but we sign them out, right, with the teachers or advisors, and so that's always been their rule, is like if you're gonna, if you're gonna take your kid home after the Science Olympia competition, you have to see us and personally come and sign them out. And so that's kind of, that was the fix that I think this parent was thinking that could work, so maybe there's an adjustment we could make in our policy.
But what about on the way there? Do they have to ride the transportation there?
They can, but if they didn't, then you let the advisor or individual know, whoever's managing the group. So it was, there was, there's always like a communication.
That's a pretty standard piece across, you know, even some of our sports.
Yeah, but for sports, it's, I mean, Mr. Dennison for cross-country, for example, is pretty clear, like you ride there with us, you ride back with us, and so, you know, it seemed like maybe we should be consistent, I guess, across the board.
Could you talk to me about the difference between how our sports finance transportation versus our clubs?
A lot of that comes out of the athletic department funds as well. Each of our individual clubs and activities have their own accounts that they're working through. Oftentimes, with some of those, they do get supplemented through principal fund possibly as well, but it depends on the club and activity.
But what do you say? Participate. Sports sets, that's why Science Olympia and sports and marching band have paid participate because that money helps offset costs for transportation and for supplementals.
So sports, marching band, and, and.
Science Olympia, I believe is the other one.
Have paid to participate.
Yeah, and it's interesting because Mr. Crowe and I had some conversations about like Model UN and mock trial, some of these other clubs and activities that do a lot of travel to different competitions, and should we start lumping them into the pay to participate as well? You know, then, okay, we're just passing off that cost to our families.
And then we give the drivers.
So, and that's again, from the transportation standpoint, we're being somewhat creative in the way we get some of those groups to their different events, you know, that they may have to leave a little bit earlier to get to the event, because that's when the bus is available, and they're dropping them off at that event, that bus is then coming back to drive their afternoon routes, and then it's going back to get them afterwards.
Yeah.
So there may be some of that type of thing that we would have to look at with Top Twenty-Five as well, depending on when those events are.
Is this something we could get kind of an answer to before October? That way, if we have to look at, if it's a last resort and we have to look at our policy, because Top Twenty-Five is so expensive as it is, and Jenny knows, like especially if they're wanting to compete now, which they haven't really done that in the past, but now they're wanting to dip back into it, and that becomes very expensive, and so, you know, I think they would, we would need to act quickly on the policy change, and obviously run it by legal, just double check.
Yeah, so a couple of things I'll do as a follow-up then. Number one, I'll take a look at our old policy to see if there was a difference between transportation policies there. Second thing I'll do is I'll meet with John Fulmer just to see what that request has been, you know, when those things are, what time those events are, and we'll also look at our respective budgets to see what we can, what we can offer there. And then, obviously, third, we'll be having the conversation with legal to see if we do need to shift something around. And again, I think I may have said this in my email remarks as well, we want to make sure we're weighing out that risk, you know, that we're taking if students were to drive themselves to an event, for example. You know, so there may be some administrative guidelines that would have to go along with that, there may be some other legal things that our attorneys might share with us that we would need to make sure we consider from, you know, hold harmless forms, whatever it may be.
But we could shoot for an answer, if we do need to change the policy, or propose it, obviously, we don't all discuss it, but for a first reading or discussion, I guess it would be a first reading since we're discussing it now.
And we'll get that in some of the board updates here this week, next week, just to kind of give everybody an idea where we are with some of those, some of this work.
Yes, we have this.
There is a need for a change in policy. We'll toss out some of the recommended language changes.
Would you get feedback from MCE on this?
Yeah, because MCE would obviously need to be involved. We've had a lot of good conversations with MCE regarding transportation over the last few weeks here as well.
Okay.
And again, we've got a good relationship with the MCE leadership team, so we're trying to bounce ideas off of each other and make sure that we're within contract language there as well. And then again, legal counsel's able to point us in the right direction with some of these things too.
With Science Olympia, the students pay the one-hundred-and-fifty dollars participation, pay the play fee, which is not charged for things like Power of the Pen or my, that's the fifteen-dollar overall fee. How is that decision made? And in the case of the sports, there's the booster clubs that would offer scholarship or whatever to make sure that a student who couldn't afford to play otherwise has an opportunity. Those are some of the moving parts that would be good to have that kind of figured out because the extracurriculars, the clubs, don't necessarily have that mechanism of parent fundraising that you would have for some things, Top Twenty-Five would, but Power of the Pen would not, it's very small. So maybe if the membership is under a certain level, and obviously, those are going to be young kids, so they can't drive themselves.
Typically, like Power and the building level administrators budget that in because they know it's one or two events, and they know it's.
Or parents will drive them, you know, if it's only a handful of kids, it's feasible to do, and they're not going for ten different events each semester or something like that, so lots of considerations.
I had another question on transportation, I was going with that one. This is just an idea, well, I guess I have a question first. Do we see a lot of call-offs in the transportation department? Is that an area that they have like a lot of call-offs? Because I know we ran into it last year, but I don't know if that's something we're in.
Yeah, yeah, and it's one of those classifications where, you know, there are a lot of sick, a lot of sick time is used. You know, we just mentioned at the last board meeting too, with FMLA, we've got, you know, three, maybe four drivers now that are going to be off extended periods of time for different medical reasons, so we do see a lot of it in that classification area.
And this might be, I'm just throwing this out there, I'm not saying I want to do it, but you know how for We Care, we offer bonuses, well, not us, but the We Care, you know, they offer bonuses to, if they have good attendance, they get a bonus, like every quarter or whatnot. Is that something, I know it would be MCE, like we would have to come to them with that, but is that something, do you think that would help? I mean, are they, or are they pretty legitimate? Obviously, FMLA you can't touch, you can't do anything like that, but.
No, and I know there are some things that we've done in that department over the last couple of years just to incentivize attendance as well. There were, didn't we used to have specific language in the contract too, if I remember correctly, that, you know, has tried to incentivize the attendance as well. So, you know, there are some things that we potentially could look at in our contractual language, but I think a lot of it goes back to our department leaders with some of that too, and again, it's building that culture in the department to make sure that they are wanting to be there on a daily basis, and wanting to make sure they're working together as a team, and wanting to support each other as they're working through some of these other unforeseeable health considerations, so. And again, I think over the last couple of years, we've made some considerable growth in that area, in that department, and we've seen a lot, we've seen a lot of growth in a lot of people in that department. Is there still room for improvement? Absolutely, there is across the board, but that's something that I think we can continue to push. But again, we can look at some of the, and maybe that's what I'll include in board update this week as well, is some attendance incentive language that we've seen in the past.
Before we move on, I just want to, sorry, it's an unfinished piece of business from last meeting. I want to just give a nod to Mrs. Sturm for coming to the meeting last, goodness, was it only last week? And I'm hoping that, you know, I know that she connected with those parents who came to speak at the meeting, I just want to publicly thank her for that. I did too, I spoke with them and thanked them for coming to speak. Is that on its way to being remedied?
And actually, because I know Mrs. Iaplo is part of that route as well, that has been worked through, we, so again, we had to work through, again, some contractual pieces. If we alter bus routes based on contractual language, we cannot make an adjustment to a route that is over or under ten minutes. If there's something that's over or under ten minutes, we're in violation of the contract just based on, you know, the labor practices there. So that's something that Mrs. Sturm and her team have been trying to work through to come up with this resolution. Obviously, we've been committed to that, we've been working through that for about four or five weeks now with some of those concerns that were brought up, and trying to figure out, okay, what's the ridership first, and how do we address that? And then, based on those ridership numbers, where are we able to make some adjustments to maybe pull somebody off of either a northern elementary route or high school route and put them in a southern elementary route to address our concerns at the Morley Road bus stop? So we were able to do that. Mrs. Sturm and her team did a great job coming up with that solution, staying within that ten-minute contractual language that we had to meet as well. That was pushed out to families yesterday, and that started today. So we've been able to resolve that one issue, still a couple other issues we're looking at as well, just to try and do some individual bus stop changes, and we, you know, we still have some of the bus stop change requests. I think it's considerably better than it was last year when we had about six hundred of them.
Yes, it is better.
I think we were down to like two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty this year, so much improved. And again, the nice part with this too, with Mrs. Sturm going through this process this year of creating those routes, because really, we kind of blew it up last year, it started over, to try and make sure that we were making everything work within the system, and within the drivers that we have available to us, and as we make those adjustments here this year, we'll just be able to kind of copy and paste that into next year to hopefully alleviate some of the bus stop concerns that we've originally had. And again, we're always hopeful that our staffing improves as well, so that we can get additional drivers in.
I think that'll be really helpful, I talked about a little bit in there, but just having, because I know that was some of the complaints, like why do I have to change it? I changed it the last ten years, why am I dealing with this again? But making sure that we carry over any of these stops that we have this year that we're like, oh, gosh, no, that needs to change, we can't have a kid there, we can't, like the Morley, you know, having a documentation of that to make sure we carry it over, I think is going to be alleviate some of this.
And again, just as a reminder to everyone in our community as well, we, you know, we got the new routing software last year, and our previous routing software was severely outdated. The individual that put all those routes in then resigned suddenly last year, and that's where we kind of picked up the pieces and put everything all together, and that's why we had six hundred bus stop change requests, because it was a brand-new system that created all of these new bus stops and all these new routes, and we made adjustments. Well, with Mrs. Sturm coming on, needed to kind of overhaul what had been done before and got some of that in place. Yeah, I know there were a couple of situations where, you know, there was a bus stop request that came up, and Mrs. Sturm reached out, and she's like, is this one that you dealt with last year? And I'd be able to go back to our spreadsheet, my notes, and say, yeah, this is what we did for this and this and this. Now that's all going to be captured in what we have this year that we can take over in an extra, so it's a transition, obviously, but we're hopeful we'll be in a better spot at the beginning of next year.
That's something that we, that I think is going to be important for people to hear because I knew what it wasn't, I knew that nobody was being negligent about safety, but what, there was a disconnect, and not, and for parents to learn that that information from prior years was not necessarily being carried over immediately, that it was brand-new, you know, where it was looking at like, well, the last few years, you deemed this unsafe, and now it's suddenly safe, like your standards aren't ring, so I think that's going to be a huge thing for parents to see to, you know, maybe it'll stop the phone calls. But just some, just some other things, I did appreciate having a lot of questions and concerns answered earlier, and I think we, we all agree, every, a lot of work has gone into changing transportation, kind of revamping it after the last couple of years have not been great, but there are still, there's still work to do, and I think to, you know, the struggles of hiring is, you know, something that's a concern. One of my questions to Mr. Heath, leading up to this email was, or this meeting was, what is our hiring practices? We hear things, I'm not going to jump to any conclusions, but it's worth asking, you know? So that's something I would hope that we can, you know, I'm certainly not putting anybody on the spot and asking cue now, but.
And I've got the process, so let me go ahead and answer that part, and then we can jump maybe into the second part with that too, Mrs. Iaplo. First of all, just the requirements to become a bus driver here in matter. Number one, they're going to complete the local application, you know, we've got the online application under our employment opportunities, and they come in, they do the BCI and FBI record checks, so those are done right in our office. They have a physical exam and drug testing that they have to go through, and I can lay some of this out in the board update this week for you as well, so you've got all the bullet points to this. They complete a fifteen-hour pre-service school bus driver training class, and again, this is scheduled and paid for by our school district, so we get them registered for that class. They then take a vision and written test at any of the driver exam stations, just general knowledge, air brakes if required, transporting passengers, and then a school bus test.
Here, I'll say it again.
Air brakes.
What's that?
The air brakes on the buses, you know, different type of braking system than just driving a car. Then after they pass all of those tests, they purchase their commercial learner's permit, it's a CLP, from the BMV, this is a lot of letters.
This is their cost, the commercial learning permit?
And that's the commercial learning permit, and that is valid for six months so that they can have that, that allows them to be able to practice and drive the buses.
Is that their expense or?
Their expense for this, because again, they're adding that to their own license, like if you think of it from a teaching standpoint, we're responsible for our own teaching license, and we're responsible for paying that, that's what this is for the bus driver equivalent.
Thank you.
Then they complete twelve hours or more of behind-the-wheel instruction by one of our certified onboard instructors, and we have four of them now in our district, so we are very fortunate to have them available here. Oftentimes, districts don't have those onboard instructors, and they have to go elsewhere to find those instructors.
Is that a cost to them, or is that provided?
That's provided here.
Do those instructors also drive buses?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we get them scheduled for their skills test, and that's about ninety minutes of skills test. They go through the pre-trip inspection, basic maneuverability test, and then they do a road test. They then purchase their CDL license at the BMV, and then they have to apply online for the pre-service certificate. And again, I'll lay all of this out for you guys, so you've got it all here a little bit later on. And then that certificate is the thing that gets renewed every six years. They then apply for the annual driving certificate that is issued by the county, the city, or the local board, and then if there are any other policies or procedures that the local school district requires, they would complete that at that time as well.
What are those? That's I think, because everything you just said, is that just state and federal regulations that you have to do, right?
This, yeah, this is the standard procedure to get to.
So what's above and beyond? What do we require beyond that?
I don't know if we require anything beyond that, do we?
Public school works.
Oh, sure.
Working with children, fraud training.
Sure.
Things that are required by the state that we do through our online training.
Okay, and like how many hours, what did you say that is?
For substitutes, it's less than six hours, I believe. I have to double check that if I can confirm that.
But all that's required.
And that's paid work time, that they're doing that? Or not?
I'm sorry.
Is that paid work time, she said?
They're usually doing it through the process, some of them like to do it at home, some of them will come and use our computers and transportation while they're going through the training, just their level of comfort of being on a computer, also guidance.
And is that, we pay for that? Training?
We, if they're with us and they're on train, sometimes they do it again before, on board. We, if they're with us and they're on train, sometimes they do it again before, on board training. Sometimes people are completing it at home on their own, because they want it done and wrapped up.
On average, how long would you say this takes?
It can be as quick as like six weeks. It oftentimes takes more like two to three months, depending on how...
How much time they have to get caught up?
How busy they are. A lot of our, a lot of our applicants are currently working other jobs.
I see.
And have to get the onboard instruction scheduled at different times. Oftentimes, after, you know, obviously, we can't do it during our morning and afternoon routes.
Right.
So, it's either going to be midday or after the routes are completed. So, there's a lot of that that, that kind of dictates what, what amount of time it's going to take for a person to get through that. And obviously, there's a lot of steps here. And what we've, what we've seen here in recent years is, like, we'll do a drive-the-bus event. We'll get five or six people that are interested coming in, and then they'll go through part of the process. And about halfway through, they'll be like, you know what, this is just too much.
It's a lot. I mean, that's a lot. But these are, you're saying, these are all required state and federal regulations, so there is no getting around this.
Not really, no.
If someone is coming in already with their CDL.
Yes.
So, they would do physical and drug testing, BCI, FBI. Of course, they'd have to do the public works.
Sure, but all of that other stuff in between is done, and we can get them on the road much faster. And that's part of the reason we changed some of our contractual language this year. What we're hearing from, from drivers that had an interest in coming to Mentor was that they didn't want to come and go to the bottom of the seniority list and not get the non-routine duty coverage. And that's one of those things where, now that we've changed that contractual language, it's a rotating basis now, all the way through the entire list of drivers. Instead of, okay, we go down the list, and, okay, we've got all those filled, now we're going back to the top of the list again. And it's the same 10 to 12 drivers that are getting all of that. That's changed now, that hopefully that will entice more drivers to come to us.
This, this is all either done at home, online, or in Mentor? We don't take, take some of that, someone mentioned going out to West G to do training?
No. Oh, yeah, we try and take care of everything. And again, we're big enough, and we've got the resources to be able to do that, too.
Okay, they didn't hold a class or something one of these, like, and that's where they, you could pick up a schedule or something?
And it's possible somebody may have gone through that process in a different district.
And I can clarify, you had asked if there was, if they already have a CDL, and if they have a Class A, it pretty much trumps everything. But they still need to get the endorsement, the S and P endorsement from the school bus. And then, well, I'm glad that there's no shortcuts on this, because it's a giant yellow school bus driving children. You know, I mean, there's a lot of things that you can't cut corners on. That's, that's that one. I'm so glad that there are pretty strict rules and laws that go along with that. As Mr. Heath was saying, part of the training too, working with our OBIs, is about 12 hours. But that's somebody who has already driven some sort of a truck, that they would be ready to go over 12 hours. The average person who's only driven a car needs a lot more than 12 hours. And that's before they even, they have to take the pre-service class before you can ever get behind the wheel with kids in the back. And I'm grateful for that as well. Lori Fanger does an amazing job. But the difficult thing there is, like, there is a class that starts next week. I have four people going to it, but then there isn't another one until December. And you cannot drive with kids on the bus until that. So, we work very closely with HR to get things rolling, because gradually, we don't sign them up for the course till they're completely onboard. We have all this background, and, you know, everything done. That we will jump through some hoops, because we're still not going to put them behind the wheel with kids. But at least we can get that process started. So, one gentleman that I met with today, I interviewed him today, and I haven't signed up for next week. He will be able to start, he already has a Class A, but he won't be able to start driving until December because of his job. But this will be never, ever been going. But for us to wait till December, and then he would still have to go through training, is, yeah, it's a long time.
I think a measure of the motivation of the intent, the seriousness of purpose that is evidenced by, oh, I recognize the gravity of my duties behind the wheel, and I'm happy to have that opportunity to be thoroughly trained and ready to take that on. You wouldn't want to hire somebody for that job with anything less, so I'm very glad.
And the second step of the process is the background check. Everyone though, Jackie will send them over directly, and she's interviewed them, we'll do the background check. We'll know within two hours if that applicant's background check is cleared or not cleared. And if it's being mailed, that's 30 calendar days, so it's almost in the meantime, we're like, go get the physical, go get the drug test. And then, we're kind of in this holding pattern until we get that background checked. So, we're already four weeks, a month behind at that point, where we were hoping to be aggressive to get that into that going. But as Kathy was saying, that's where we can jump through a few hoops, because while we're waiting, we might as well send them to do this. They're still not working with kids, so they're still separated from that, behind the wheel. But if we can get them enrolled in the pre-service course, and that's a tough task to go to, too. I had a gentleman at the end of last year that came in, he had his CDL, like, this is great. He went to the first day, he's like, this is not for me, I'm going to go back to driving trucks, because the first day is very intense on safety. And they watch a video of a school bus driver who went to jail because he ran over a student.
Oh, my God.
And they, but this is why, you know, we have these conversations with parents, like, our drivers are always hyper-focused on certain things. And when they're telling the kids, you need to look at me, not at your parents, to cross this road. And they take it so very seriously, because they've all seen this video, and then, you know, they interview the parents, they interview the driver. It's very emotional. I'm glad they show that on day one, because you need to know how serious it is driving that. And there's so much, you know, just the dashboard itself, all the controls on the left, and the sequence which you have to follow when you're stopping, before you're opening that door, and then assigning that safe place for the kids to wait, so they aren't coming up to the road. And a lot of kids see the bus coming and immediately come up to the road. And we say, no, you need to stay back like 10, 15 feet until that bus comes to a complete halt. The doors open, and the driver will tell you to come in. Even if you're, even if it is at the house, we still know why you're standing at the end of your driveway, standing a good 6 to 8 feet of your driveway until that bus comes to a complete stop. And the drivers take it very serious. They go through with the training, is, kids shouldn't be waiting in the house or in the car, because their job is to count the kids. And that's something that, had this driver counted his kids, he would have known that there was still one missing. So, our drivers take it very serious, where a lot of parents are like, well, I want them waiting in the house, because it's cold, and I want them waiting in the car. But this is, it's part of Ohio Revised Code, part of Ohio Administrative Code. You need to be standing out there, because there's so much that goes into just the safety aspect that most people don't realize. Like, I didn't realize it, you know, as a parent. And we take it very seriously.
Have we given, given that? I mean, that's the complaint that I, when I had said, somebody said that they would start this process, and they're like, I'm out. It was something like there was an astronomical amount of hours of training, like, how to deal, how to handle the behavior with children. Like, and he's like, ah, you know, foreign military, I've got, I'm teen grandkids, I'm not spending 30 hours or whatever. Given how, you know, the complaint was not the requirements, because obviously, this is one of the most important jobs. Reaching out to, I mean, or untapped, you know, the same group that we reach out to for SROs, retired, retired military, like, people that are not going to shy away from this stuff. That, you know, that understand that, if that's something that we can, you know, I don't know, maybe you already do that, like, tap into.
You know, one of the groups to look into as well are the retired firefighters, because a lot of them have that, that type of license down the track already because of driving the big fire trucks. And I know that was one of the things that we had looked at in central Ohio, was retired firefighters for bus drivers when I was down there.
Have we looked at that yet here?
No.
That might be something, yeah.
Just when Rose was talking about the retired military, and that's what jogged my memory on that, yeah, that might be another resource we can talk to.
People that we know are not going to be scared of this, because this is necessary, you know, yeah, they have to do that.
So, we'll bring the retired police officers in as well, retired firefighters as well, drivers.
Don't mention it in advance, and maybe they'll swoop down and try to take our idea.
Kristen, you'll need to cut that out of the video.
Don't give everybody our secrets.
Along with any, like, additional, you know, kind of the above and beyond, as we talked about, like, do we make our process harder? Do you feel like we make our process harder than, I mean, it sounded like everything was pretty required.
I like the process that we do. I do a phone, like, interview with them, just to kind of get a feel of, do you like kids? That's the process, we want to make sure, you know, okay, you can drive a truck, but tell me about some experiences you have with kids. And then, once I get a good feel for that, I'll bring them in, I'll walk them through the compound, I introduce them to some of the drivers that are there. And we just talk about, like, the culture change that we've been making in the department. And our drivers are so welcoming to them. So, if they're sitting in there, they're like, hey, I hope you join us. I mean, it's just, I've had people leave saying, if anything, I love seeing what you have going on here. And I always followed up with an email, and I go through step-by-step where we discussed. I put the link to the CDL booklet in there, and then I encourage them, you know, if you want to stop, if you just want a book in hand. I do the air brakes. I have a two-page document on that that helps. The air brakes is when the bus stops, you hear that really loud, shh, that's there. So, they have to be able to, that's the one that wakes everybody up.
I'll link all of those documents in the board update this week, so that you have all of those. The one is 112 pages, I think, but if you're really bored, you can read it.
To focus, and I say, this is going to look overwhelming. I only focus on these chapters. This is what you're going to be tested on. And then, I'll put an OVI on there. They reach out to them, like, tell me what help you need. So, their hand has helped through a lot of it.
Do you think they feel supported? I know, like, you recently had that start training that I really kind of advocated for. What, do you think it was too much, or I knew that the grant and?
They loved start training. I was a little nervous. It was eight hours.
It's intense.
They were completely engaged the entire hours. It was, it was phenomenal.
Can you talk just briefly about what the start training was, just as a reminder, the start training?
Oh, sure. I, so it's, it's Navy SEALs, it's all military that run it. Military and current officers and retired officers that run, like, tactical safety training for buses. I'm sure you could tell us more, but it, you know, they do live drill training, and they do bookwork. I mean, not bookwork, but there's a, there's a classroom component, and then there's, while they're driving, there's things that happen, like...
It's like for safety.
Tactical safety things, how you would address some issues. There's a gun on the bus, someone tries to board the bus, you know, things like that, so.
It goes to as intense as that to down to, what if you have an angry parent who's trying to get on the bus? Because a lot of times, parents don't realize, like, that's a felony to get on the bus. Like, you can't get on the bus. So, one of the things that we do is, they have my business, are going to be here, it's very upset. I understand you're upset. Here's my boss, Carter, please call her. She will answer, she will talk to you. And it's just, and I need to keep moving, because it's very, it's an inappropriate time. And it puts kids in a really bad situation when there's an angry parent. We don't want the kids exposed to any of that.
What about animals? Have you ever had animals that come on the bus?
I have training on that. That happened when I was here. A dog came on the bus, rode on the bus, yeah. Didn't know that was included in the training.
Isn't there a prevention piece with it, too? Like, you're just kind of watching the student, because you see that student every day.
Yes.
So, you're seeing, like, a change in their mood, a change in their behavior, that type of thing.
Especially like, you know, a child getting on the bus, being grumpy one day is, that's just part of being a child. But when you're seeing a pattern, and there's changes, so they, they were trained in much of a core. And just being very vigilant, and it goes along with the training, too, of not being distracted. And being very vigilant as a driver, and also of the surroundings as you're coming up to a stop. That's another thing, you know, kids need to stay seated until they come to a stop, because they're assessing everything. And there's a whole sequence in which they're looking at the mirrors before the door even opens, because we do have red light violators. And it's unfortunate, so the least amount of times that we have to cross, you know, cross unmained roads. It's, there's a lot that goes into it.
Can you, either, either prior, can you talk about the bus aids? How many do we have, and why do we have them, and do we have enough? Because it seems like there's a lot. I mean, that's a lot for bus drivers to, safety-wise, and then to also pay attention to the kids and what they're doing on the bus. That's a lot.
And obviously, a lot of that's tied into students with disabilities, and if there are transportation components of their IEP. And that's predominantly where we'll see those bus aids, will be in those situations. Every now and then, we'll have a, you know, maybe a route that's a little extra excitable. And we'll, we'll have a bus aid that will jump on one of those routes as well. But predominantly, it's, it's our students with disabilities. Those operators or those assistants are there to help with the wheelchair component. There may be some students that require a harness on the bus, and they're the ones that are responsible for getting the harnesses on appropriately. And then, just to help monitor behavior on the buses, too.
And that's for specific students, because it's right there.
But we have in the past, if there is a, I've talked to some bus drivers in the last four years, and that could be possibly like a culture thing, because they are dealing with a lot of issues on the bus with children, bullying. Well, bullying has to be repetitive, we'll just say, with main behaviors. So, that was kind of asked, like, why can't we get bus aids for that, you know, situation? So, we've done it. If there's a for-sure issue in a bit bus, sometimes we'll put them.
Yeah, there was a specific route last year, especially in the afternoons, that we had a, an additional classroom assistant on a regular bus route. For that particular reason.
That's good, though. That's been proactive, so that's good.
On the flip side, I've heard many comments from parents about the new software, so that they're getting alerted that their children are coming home. And it's, that was something that I know took a lot of work, and that it's been a delightfully successful and comforting component of transportation.
For sure, especially for working parents when we're working at home, and, why, I have 10 more minutes.
Right, right.
Helps a lot.
The one thing we're, we're still trying to work with the company on is, when we have split routes, how does that get communicated? And is that able to be tracked on, on the app? And that capability is not there yet, so that's the one little pitfall that we're still playing with. I think we've identified that we're just going to send Jeremy Woodworth to the company for a week, and he'll fix it. And then, bring him back, and we'll be good to go.
We can discount our subscription.
Yeah, there you go.
So, again, I will have the hiring process, the CDL manual, and the brake test documents in my board update this week. I've got those attached here right now, so you'll have all of that information here.
Thank you so much, and thank you guys for answering your questions.
This is really what I wanted, but I didn't, this, thank you very much.
And so, if anyone was thinking about becoming a bus driver, and they know the process, and they should contact?
Jackie Stern at MannersSchools.org. Yes, it is.
All right, great. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Come in.
Second. Janie, did you beat me to it?
That was a lot of seconds.
You can call anybody and we'll all say the same thing.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Ayapo.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at eight fifty-nine.